I'll get my little screen together. Okay, I'mma call the meeting to order. And before we start our agenda, we have some new commissioners that I would like to introduce, or allow them to introduce themselves to you. So starting on my far left.
Oh, there we go. Hi, everyone. Amos Stolz, I live in the 100 block of South Anne Street. Grew up just a little bit outside of Lancaster and have spent a couple of years here in the mid 2000s and then moved back last summer. Love the city. I have a graduate degree in urban planning, so was just interested in all things planning and excited to join this commission. Thank you.
I'm Dave Bame. For everybody that's been here before, which probably nobody, I've been an alternate member in the past and I'm just moving into a full-time slot. So not a lot will change, except whether or not I have to vote.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Shirk. I live on the 100 block of East Lemon Street. Lived in the city for 20 years, have some experience with my own kind of small development project, zoning stuff, land development, all of that. So here I am, on the other side.
Hi. And hi, everyone. I'm Kelsey Goan. I'm on the 200 block of East Chestnut Street. I've lived in the county. I grew up here and moved back to the city about two years ago. I do work with local governments all across the US, so excited to serve on the Planning Commission.
So thank you and welcome. First business of order is approval of the minutes, the meeting of September the 7th, 2022 meeting. I have a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a move and a second. Ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carried. Subdivision and land development, final land development plan for 213 College Avenue, HDC Mid-Atlantic Proposal, a five-story affordable housing apartment building on 213 College Avenue, partially on 217 College Avenue. The proposal building includes 48 one-bedroom apartments and 16 two-bedroom apartments for a total of 64 residential units. The required parking will be provided within the redeveloped garage structure, 48 spaces and additional 10 spaces within 210 Cottage Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I have some brief remarks to make before we get started with the developer's presentation. Many of you are probably familiar with this development. There's quite a bit of history to this that the developer may want to add to, but I thought we would just go back to the very roots of where this project originally started. And that was with the announcement of the closure of what we used to know as St. Joseph's Hospital or UPMC. When that closure was announced, of course, there was a lot of concern in the community about what would happen with that property thereafter. The city planning staff and elected officials quickly got involved with speaking with UPMC Pinnacle and trying to understand their plans for that property going forward. It became very clear, as I think the mayor and others have stated, that it was very unlikely a hospital was going to re-enter that building, given the condition of the facility and other healthcare interests that were already emerging elsewhere and nearby. And in order for that property to be redeveloped, it needed to be rezoned because it was zoned as a hospital complex. So that became a contingency of the sale of that deal. And ultimately, City Council and this commission as well endorsed rezoning to mixed use, which allowed the redevelopment of that hospital to proceed. And in the discussion of that deal, affordable housing was raised as a primary concern by the community, among other services that residents wanted to see provided on-site. So it was through that negotiation that UPMC volunteered several parcels of property that it would make a contingency of sale, and those properties were to be reserved for affordable housing. And that includes the parcel that's before us this evening, or I should say the project that's before us this evening, 213 College Ave. There's a longer history of, you know, how this project ultimately came to shape and how it now looks the way it does. But this project that we're reviewing tonight is the culmination of, I would say, a lot of work from the administration and other community partners to see that community benefits are delivered to the city through this larger redevelopment effort of College Ave. So tonight we have before us an affordable housing project led by HCC Mid-Atlantic. I know that they've been working very hard to follow through on their commitments and the city's commitment to seeing affordable housing. And regardless of what residents may like or not like about this project, one thing is clear, and that is to see a historical, sorry, to see an affordable project of this size in this part of the city is really historically unprecedented in recent years. So with that, I'll just mention a few key approvals that are in place and kind of where this is in the planning process. A number of approvals have been pursued through this project. And really, just to briefly recap, I mean, zoning hearing board, historical commission, shade tree commission, traffic, no, no traffic commission, we didn't need to do that one. And this project really is ready for approval this evening from the city's perspective with certain conditions attached to that approval. So happy to go through those conditions in more detail, but I think we should wait to get into those until the developer has an opportunity to walk us through their site plan. So with that, please. And just as a quick reminder to the commission, specifically the newer commissioners, this meeting is being videoed this evening, livestreamed, and is on our YouTube page. This has been one of our ongoing efforts to create more transparency in city government. So glad to do that. So that's why we use the microphone, so that everyone on YouTube who's livestreaming can hear what we say. So I ask the same of anyone who comes up to make comments this evening. So please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Bernadette Hoennadl of Nicholas and Hoennadl, counsel for the applicant or the developer in this project. With me this evening, we have representatives of HDC, Dan Hanchin, Claude Hicks, Tammy Fitzpatrick, Tom Englerth from Site Design Concepts will walk you through the project in more detail. And Gary Weaver, our architect of Tippets Weaver Architects, is also here this evening. I wanted to provide a little background, although Douglas has stolen a lot of my materials, so I can talk really fast and I won't have to say much. But as we all know, affordable housing has been an issue. The city has been endeavoring to provide projects that will provide additional affordable housing in the city, and they came to HDC to work as a partner with them in coming forward with the project. You'll see in the materials that Adamsbury Associates is involved in this as well. Adamsbury is an affiliate of HDC that was formed to be like the development entity for the project, but it's HDC. It's just the way financing and everything has to go. So that's why Adamsbury is a different name. This project, we started like officially in January of 2020, would be when we would say it was kicked off originally, and that was with a public meeting that we had to gather input from neighbors and also to sort of give them an overall concept of what we were thinking was going to happen between the HDC parcels that they ultimately would like to develop, as well as the old hospital property. Since that time, and as Douglas has mentioned, we have, and tonight is number 10, we have had 10 hearings or meetings in front of various city commissions, boards, and what have you. We have had, during that time, we've also been very involved in community engagement to keep the community up to date on what's going on and to know what our plans were. We've had six public meetings. There's a website that's devoted just to providing updates and details on the project. And as well, HDC puts out a bi-weekly email to all the neighbors to let them know upcoming meetings, hearings, any changes, anything of that nature. Basically, I think Douglas covered most of what I wanted to cover. I'm going to pass it to Tom Englerth. He will walk you through the details of the project. And then if you have any questions for either myself, Tom, or anybody else on our team at any time during the presentation, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Again, my name's Tom Englerth with Site Design Concepts. We are the civil engineering firm responsible for the site plans and land development plans associated with this project. This is our third time before the Planning Commission. We've given two other presentations in detail on what is planned. I have provided a detailed narrative to the staff, I believe distributed to you, with some of the details of the project and what we're proposing. I'm going to walk through some of the issues, some of the details of this project quickly. And again, we will be available to answer your questions that you have specifically about some of the details associated with it. The project site that we are developing is approximately, well, it's four parcels and approximately six tenths of an acre. And we have a very good view of it. I don't know that you do. Maybe you have it on your screen. But I have a pointer that I actually bought specially this week because I lost my last one.
We do have screens up here, too, that we're able to see.
That's a bummer because I wanted to use my pointer, but I'll do it for the audience. 213 currently is this parcel right here, and it is currently improved with a 4,000-square-foot medical office building. The second parcel that's part of the project is 217, and that is improved, this is the larger lot, and that's improved with the two-story parking garage that we've been discussing. And then in the rear of the project site, fronting on Elm Street, and Mendali is able to show those as well, are two unimproved, I assume they were formerly residential lots, very small in nature. This project proposes to demo that existing medical office building on 213, build over top and upgrade a portion of the parking garage right here. And some of the development will also occur in the rear on Elm Street, the two Elm Street properties. So that takes us to our proposed site layout. And on this, you can see, this is a five-story affordable housing, 64-unit apartment building that is being proposed. It's still going to front. The main entrance will be on College Avenue. There will be a sidewalk connecting at Elm into the rear and will be built over top of, and expanded a little bit in the rear for the parking garage. We also are meeting the requirements of the city for the number of parking spaces required. We're required one per unit with a reduction of 10% if we provide bike parking, which we are. So we have 58 parks exclusively for this project site. We also meet the stormwater management requirements by providing two subsurface infiltration beds, one in the rear and one out front. And some various improvements to College Avenue. We are taking out the sidewalk in its entirety and providing a street planting strip, which is a requirement of the city, along with some street trees planted in there. Another improvement that we are making, there is an existing mid-block crossing of College, College Avenue, and those ramps are not currently up to ADA requirements. So we are going to bring those up to ADA compliance as well, along with the exit to the driveway apron from the exit of the parking deck further north on College Avenue. So that is kind of a high-level review for hopefully those of you that have been on the Planning Commission for the last year. Remember all the details that we presented before, and we refresh your memory with that narrative that was submitted. And for the new members, I'm hoping that that narrative helped you understand the project. It is a very complex project. It's not a run-of-the-mill land development plan that you're going to see normally in your position. And Douglas was correct, it was an extensive review period, majority of the summer, end of spring into the summer. And we're at a point now where we're proud to be at this point to have met the majority of the conditions. We have a handful of conditions I think Douglas is going to go over. And aside from that, we've met all the comments the city has provided. You know, it was, I'll say, an exhaustive process, but I say that in a very respective way. I think the city should be proud of their staff for doing such a thorough review and holding us accountable to make sure that this project meets the requirements of the city's codes. So with that, I will be able to answer any questions that you have.
I have a couple of questions. I know some residents that are neighbors, and I know that some neighbors are not very happy about this. And I know that you indicate you've got 17 letters of support, or I'm just curious, like what percentage of the neighbors are behind it versus against it?
I don't know if somebody else can answer that question. I do know that we had a number of people at the Planning Commission meeting for the first submission speak in promotion of this project. I don't know what the percentage of the neighbors are who are against it.
Just please.
If I may, just sorry, as a quick introduction, I just want to remind the commission and folks in the room that, you know, our duty this evening is to approve this plan per the subdivision land development ordinance, not to make judgment on the, what from my perspective is the extensive engagement process or what the neighbors may or may not think about it. I certainly want to hear from them. I don't, just want to be clear about that, but our duty is, at the end of the day, to make sure that this meets the letter of the law and take action on that, and that alone.
Sure.
Would you like me to address that?
Yeah, it's more of a curiosity, so.
So I won't speak to specific numbers. I will say that in every video.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry. Claude Hicks, Senior Vice President of Real Estate Development for HCC Mid-Atlantic. In every video meeting that we had during COVID, there was less than 2% of negative comments of any kind. None that were against the project. More were against the fact that the hospital had closed. When we had our meetings here, there were a number of people who expressed concerns, but I think there were an equal number, if not more, that expressed support for affordable housing in the city and in particular this project. Thank you.
My other question is kind of, I apologize if maybe we have this information, but what is happening to the rest of the St. Joseph's Hospital property and how is it going to work in conjunction with this project?
So we are not a partner of the St. Joe's Hospital. It's our understanding that the hospital's been purchased by a private entity, and they are looking at putting market-rate apartments and townhomes on that lot. I'm not sure where they are in the process, but that is the plan.
We had previously talked about access on the south side of the building, the distance between lots and trees with the surrounding properties. I believe that was this project. I just wasn't sure if that had been looked at or addressed in any way since the time we were here.
So there has been no access provided. Only a small portion of the project site is controlled in a manner that would allow HDC to provide that access. The rest of the property is based on air rights that we are receiving from the entity that owns 217. So we don't have the ability to provide that access for the majority of the length of that property line.
I noticed there has been some changes with Elm Street, and I'm sure it was because of some of the neighbors' input about how traffic will access that. Can you just go into just a little more detail with, it appears, is that now a sidewalk and the apron change perhaps?
Yes, so we are providing a street planting strip and trees, based on the trees that are being removed. That was approved by the Shade Tree Commission. The apron itself and the entrance, I should say, the apron will be addressed as part, if there's a requirement there for ADA or some sort of issue with the apron itself, that will be addressed as part of the development process of Washington Place. We are going to, as part of this project, and I think one of the conditions of approval is going to be for us to put up a metal fence barrier similar to the screening that's already on the exterior of the garage to close off that entrance once this project is complete.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, traffic won't be able to enter or exit the parking garage off of Elm Street. They'll have to enter through College?
After this project is complete, yes.
Oh, okay. That's a good thing.
Just a question about the building. I'm not sure, to the lower portion, right down here. Is that backing up against the residential homes along Walnut, Chestnut Street? Yeah, okay. And how far is that distance between the building and their property lines?
I believe it's seven and a half feet. Seven or seven and a half feet.
Is that area going to be lit at all for safety?
I don't think it's lit right now. I don't think it's lit.
Okay.
At this point, it's not lit.
And I think, sorry, if I may clarify, I think the setbacks, and Tom, you can double-check me in the plan here, but I believe that the closest portion of the building is five and a half feet from the property lines. And then the remaining portion of the building, which is setback further, is 12 feet in accordance with the zoning ordinance setback.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. As of now, there's no access that's being shown or provided on the plan in that portion of the site. If there were, site lighting may, well, that's certainly a point of discussion, but for now, there's no pedestrian facilities shown behind there.
Correct.
Would that be a thorough connection from College back to Elm Street? I'm just envisioning like kids cutting through there after school.
It's going to be private property, so, you know, that access, I shouldn't say access, that pathway exists today. The building that exists today, we're putting this building in the same location as the building that exists today.
Is there any public right-of-way in that area? I'm just curious.
On the backs of Chestnut Street lots? No, there's not.
Okay.
As for the stormwater, has the, with the changes made, it seems like now there will be actually less contribution to, trying to phrase it correctly, but basically there'll be less surface that will be impermeable, right? So with what you've done, it's actually an improvement to the amount of water that will be absorbed before it reaches the shared system?
I think we are increasing the impervious slightly. However, we are, our underground systems are taking more of the water than what was being taken before.
I think that was what I was.
Thank you. Any further questions from the commission?
Yeah, we had said at the last meeting, I vaguely remember us having some conversation about the unit sizes, for example, inside. Internally, have there been any changes as far as like that structure? I think one of the concerns was having larger units. No?
No, no changes to the interior units.
Any other questions from the commission?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a couple of quick questions. Previously, well, currently, I understand there are utility units of some kind, maybe AC units, on the southern boundary in the portion that's closest to the property lines, the rears of Chestnut Street properties. Are those being moved to the rooftop as well? I'm just wondering what that path looks like from beginning to end on the southern part of the property. Well, currently, you can't really walk through there, if I recollect.
I believe it's overgrown through there right now. There are units there. You can probably sneak around those. I don't think they go all the way to the property line. Those units are going to be moved, so yeah, it's going to be grass. Grass cover.
Okay, we can come back to that point about the southern boundary there, but regarding the AC units, they'll be on the rooftop. I know that there were concerns previously just about noise or vibration of those units in the area. I'm wondering if you can speak to that and what you might be doing to, you know, mitigate that from being a nuisance to the neighbors.
Good evening. My name's Gary Weaver. I'm with Tippets Weaver Architects, the architects for the project.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Gary Weaver with Tippets Weaver Architects, architect for the project. As Tom said, the existing one-story building will be removed. The existing mechanical units that serve that building will be removed. They currently exist between the southernmost limit of the building that's shown up there and the neighboring fence. And so they fill most of that space currently. They have some sort of fences around them that also has some insulation on it, which I guess was supposed to knock down some of the sound from those units. But they sit right between the building and the neighboring fence. All of the new units will be on the rooftop, and from this rooftop view, you can see they're sort of scattered across the top of the roof. Most of them are on the northern portion of the roof. The whole rear portion of the building, you can see, is sort of pocheted or shaded on this plan. That's an access across the top of the roof for egress, and there's a fence line north of that that screens those mechanical units, so you would not be able to see those mechanical units, and they are on the northern section. and they are on the northern section of the roof. The bulk of those units are relatively small units. They're small compressor units that you'd have kind of like in a residential, a single-family house or something like that. There are a couple larger units that are make-up air, what's called a DOAS unit, that sit on the roof. Those would be the larger units. They're largely bringing in fresh air, and they're the larger rectangular spaces that are shown on the roof.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver, to maybe make you walk back, but I'm just processing what you said. I don't know that I heard anything about like decibel levels or whether there is something in particular that's being added to the rooftop to prevent noise or what your perception of what the volume might be that's, that's produced from these.
I, I don't know the specific decibel level of those units, to be honest with you. It's a very conventional way of handling HVAC units for buildings in the city. Many of the projects that we work on are like this, where the units sit on the roof. We, at this point, have not done any specific noise reduction on them. They will be isolated from the building below on isolators, but that's really about vibration and transmission of, you know, vibration noise through the building. So at this point, we have not really investigated anything beyond normal, the normal means.
Okay, so it sounds like there's, there's nothing that you think would make this an sort of excessively loud compared to other projects that are constructed in the city or AC units that are put on tops of the three-story buildings that are throughout the city.
Yeah, I would say that that's, on a typical residential building, that is correct, yeah. On larger commercial buildings or institutional buildings, oftentimes there are rooftop chillers and that sort of thing, which tend to be considerably louder than this equipment. This equipment is largely residential scale and not that noisy, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there going to be a fence around the units or not?
There is a screen that runs along, so you can see Mandali sort of identifying the screen. There's a screen along the south side that screens all the mechanical units on the lower roof, so that they would not be visible from anywhere on the ground, particularly to the south. And everything's setback towards the center of the building, so they're within the sight lines. There is not a fence that runs around the entire area of mechanical units because they're so close to the center of the roof.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver.
One other question. I was looking at the sightline marking on the driveway coming onto College, the primary driveway for the site. And I, I noticed that, yeah, it is there vaguely. Mandali, I don't know if you can trace kind of where that, that sightline is? Yeah, that's, that's at that line that you have your cursor on. So the, the tree to the south is within that sightline, but I was noticing that the sightline, it looks like it's drawn from maybe the center of the drive aisle, not, or from the whole, center of the driveway, and maybe not where a car would be positioned as it's exiting. So what I'm getting at is I, I'm wondering whether the tree is going to be obscuring the driver's view. And in particular, this is a concern because of the bike lane that's on College Ave. So am I right that the sightline is maybe not correctly positioned here? Or if it is, I just would be curious of your reasoning and whether you think that tree would be problematic?
So first of all, I believe that is only going to be an entrance. There will not be an exit.
Okay, it's only an entrance. Okay, so then there's, got it.
And, and the way, it's not depicted very well in this plan, but that is, that property line there, that is not necessarily the center of the driveway. The driveway, we, we have it in the center of the drive. But yes, that's an exit or an entrance, so.
Are there, are there lane markings that indicate that it's only an entrance?
Yeah, this is in and the other one is not.
So the, the lane is going to be right here. This is the entrance. This will, this is, this is blocked. This is, uh...
Well, is that sidewalk?
Curbing and, and concrete, yes.
Curbing and concrete, and that's existing or is that, that's installed?
That's, that's existing.
That's existing, okay. Okay, thank you for that. All right, I think those, those are my questions. I, I do have conditions that we can go over, but I'll pass it back to the chairman. Maybe we want to hear public comment before we get into conditions.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So now we'll invite the public to come and share their opinion.
Because only with that much time have I begun to scratch the surface of my understanding.
Excuse me, just like introduce yourself.
My name is Bill Hannigan, 300 block of College Avenue. Members of the Planning Commission, staff, and members of the public, the proposal for 213 College Avenue, as submitted by HDC, must be denied this evening. Litigation over zoning is pending in Lancaster County Court of Common Pleas. Prior to last night's meeting of the Shade Tree Commission, contact was made with Cody Kiefer, the city's urban forester. Mr. Kiefer said he required the developer to hire an arborist to evaluate whether the boundary-crossing tree roots and canopies are endangered by the proposed construction. Mr. Kiefer said the developer contacted two arborists and both refused the work. Last night, the Shade Tree Commission unanimously denied the applicant's request for a permit to remove a tree on adjacent property. The decades-old tree is valued at $98,000, and it faces death over proposed stormwater management infrastructure along College Avenue. This was glossed over in an issue raised earlier this evening. The commission members cited City Code Section 27, 273 dot 10. It states, "There shall be no disturbance within the tree protection zone for soil, roots, or canopy." This is the drip line, the perimeter of the tree. The wording of this code is among dozens of points listed in a memorandum dated May 9, 2022. It was signed by Chief Planner Douglas Smith and sent to Thomas Angler of Site Design Concepts. Knowing more than four months ago about this street-tree landscaping conflict, the developer ignored a red flag. The infrastructure as proposed was not revised. Turning to the memorandum under Planning, the four, there are four entries I question. Chief among them, and I quote, "Since HDC requires, relies on the parking deck owned by Washington Place Equities, HDC shall make sure that the development can be functionally independent or come to an agreement with Washington Place about the future of the parking deck. This agreement shall be shared with the city and recorded as part of the plan. Please confirm this document, this agreement for an easement behind the Medical Arts Building does or did not, does not exist. If it does not exist, there's no exit for traffic from this proposed development. There is no path forward for this proposal." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hannigan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just briefly respond to that final question, and thank you, Mr. Hannigan, for providing your comments in writing, too. Yes, one of the conditions, and maybe, maybe I should have gone over the conditions of approval first, just for clarification. There are a number of agreements that have to be submitted in order for this plan to be able, to be recorded. And one of them, actually, I'll read two of them because they pertain to your question. Condition six, and again, I'll go over these, we'll have them on the screen later. The parking lease agreements, developer agreements between landowners, cross easements of any kind that support this development shall be compliant with all city ordinances, standards, and the approved land development plan and be submitted to the city for record. In addition to that, another condition states, "All required and necessary agreements must be submitted for city review and approval, including, but not limited to, stormwater access easements, stormwater O&amp;M agreements, utility easements, and the city's developers' agreement per Chapter 265." So the, the first condition I read is regarding cross easements of any kind. There are a number of access easements that are being established through this development to permit full use of the parking deck and ingress and egress from, from the sites and across boundaries. So that, that is definitely of the utmost concern for the city to make sure that this development functions. And happy to get into those conditions in more detail later.
Good evening, and welcome to our new members. My name is Michelle LaGrassa, and I am the owner of 663 West Chestnut Street. I will once again express my opposition for the approval of the HDC College Avenue project. I do not believe that the developers have been forthcoming with their plans from inception. While they will argue timelines and notices, I can tell you with all certainty, as PHFA is also one of my partners, that this is not the case. I will have, however, not spend my three minutes hashing out their lack of transparency. I would, however, like a show of hands from any of the members that are aware that HDC's approved zoning variances have been appealed in the Court of Common Pleas. Are you all aware of that? Is everyone aware that's sitting on the board? Let me just go, okay? These zoning variances were granted based on need, not hardship, as required by law. This appeal in itself should suspend any future approvals or hearings related to this project, until which time the courts can make a decision and any appeals are exhausted. At this time, I would also like to make HDC aware that if we do not prevail at the Court of Common Pleas level, we will be appealing any decision not favorable to the appellate court and if necessary, to the State Supreme Court. As I am sure you are aware, the timeframe for these appeals are endless and could set this project back three to five years with no resolution or a win for the plaintiff and endless grant money spent on attorney fees. I would also like to express my disappointment in the commission. It is your job not only to approve projects in our community, but also to protect the integrity of the homes and neighborhoods within that project area that will be detrimentally affected by said project. It is disheartening to me that the Shade Commission voted last evening not to approve HDC's request to cut down a 70-year-old oak tree that would impede on their project. This decision was unanimous, and the commission directed HDC to find an alternative. They believe this tree was worth saving. However, this commission has turned a blind eye to my previous statements that this project will jeopardize the structural integrity of the homes surrounding this project. In conversation with Jack McSherry, structural engineer, stated that the damage is not an if it will occur, it's a when. This commission has been poised to approve this project on politics alone. I urge you to reconsider not only to protect my home, but the homes of my friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a brief comment regarding the litigation that's pending. So the zoning hearing board is, has been, suit has been filed against them by a group of neighbors who are, were party to that decision. In other words, they met the definition for party status because of where they live in regard to the parcel that, that's before us tonight. The, there is nothing in state code, city law, that I'm aware of that prevents this body from making a decision on the plan that is before us tonight. I'm sure Ms. Hoenadel can say more about that if, if necessary. The developer has the right to proceed at their own risk. That litigation continues and eventually will be resolved. In the meantime, the city cannot make decisions based on conjecture in that lawsuit. So we grant the same rights to HDC as we would any other developer that comes through this door, and those are the, what's in our ordinances. And tonight, in particular, the subdivision of land development ordinance is the only thing that we are ruling on tonight. It is not the previous zoning decisions. This body does not have the purview to make any corrections or any decisions regarding zoning. So just wanted to make that clear.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, I'm Beth Bather. I'm at 655 West Chestnut Street, and I'm basically smack in the middle of the block, and I back up to the, to the new building. First, I, I must say I'm a little concerned since this is supposed to be the final meeting, and, you know, some of you have even stated, you know, you didn't know the street. It was like, Chestnut, Walnut Street, you know? This, this is the final meeting, and I would hope that you all, you know, ask a lot of questions and look at the plans. From the start of discussions about this project with the community, there's been a concern from the neighbors, neighboring properties, about the size and accessibility to the rear of the building. We've repeatedly asked for an alleyway. I attended the June 14 City Council meeting, at which time the council members had many safety questions for Fire Chief Hutchinson, and he was there. Near the end of their 15-minute questioning session, Council President Smith Wade El asked again, "Does not having an alley there behind the building create fire risks for Elm Street and West Chestnut?" The fire chief responded yet again, he had said this like three or four times, "We train for accessibility in historic areas that large fire trucks cannot get into." Lastly, Councilmember Walsh asked if there's any way to adjust the design to increase the distance between the new building and existing properties. And the developer said with the existing building, there is not. We have heard at meetings that the parking deck cannot support fire trucks and that the grade to enter the parking deck does not allow large trucks. And they just said that this is the existing entrance. A, a large truck cannot go up, it's too much of a grade. So how does the fire chief's answer that fire trucks and apparatus can get to the building be valid? Proposed building is five stories tall and a block long from College to Elm Street. If fire trucks connect, cannot go on parking decks, and they're not required to allow aerial access because of, they meet the building code, and there's no access alley behind the building, does the proposed building meeting building codes and being fully sprinkled and fully alarmed enough? Most properties on the 600 block that backed to the new building do not have driveways. We don't have access to our backyards. Again, how will the rear of our properties be accessed in an emergency? Last night, I attended the Shade Tree Commission meeting. It was a unanimous vote to deny removal of a large tree on the Malagro House property. Commission said they feel the developer needs to rethink their plan as to how the building will fit within the existing mature neighborhood, not how the neighboring properties should all have to adapt to a new building. I have a 38-inch diameter American elm tree, which is rare and endangered. In the rear of my property was a 50% to 70% canopy going over the parking deck behind me. The developer asked the tree be removed or will need to be severely pruned back. And again, I've been corresponding with urban forester Cody Kiefer. He states that the, quote, "The city requires, the developer has to prove that the pruning they propose can be accomplished without detriment to the tree via a detailed report from an ISA-certified arborist." And Cody had not received such a report. He had asked for a status update last week in a meeting the city had with the developer, and they said that two arborists they had contracted could not provide such a report. So unless they work out with an agreement with all respective property owners, the city will not issue the requisite tree work permits unless the requirement is met. Lastly, and this is what your guys' job is, what is the lighting plan for the back of the building? And how will it affect our backyards? The, the developer has just said there's no lighting plan. How will trash trucks be able to access the parking deck if large trucks can't, you know, go up there? Where, where are the trash dumpsters? Are they going to pull 64 trash bins out to College Avenue? There are too many resolved answers for a meeting about a final approval of a project. And I would really hope that you guys would think, the new people, you need to look at these plans. It does not fit in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Christina Duncan, and I am the executive director of Malagro House. There's been a lot of talk tonight about the tree. It's our tree. And I just wanted to say that we had given our permission if it was necessary, and we have a concern about the safety of the tree. Should it be compromised, that it could fall on the playground, Malagro House playground. So, we would actually prefer that it be removed. Guess one of my questions too, and seeing the talk about the alleyway, we have not been approached about an alleyway, but the alleyway would be an entrance from my property, and I would think that tree would need to be removed if the neighbors would like an alleyway there. We're in favor of this project. I can speak to the transparency. We have worked with HTC extensively. They have been incredibly transparent. They have been incredibly forthcoming. And if we have all attended the meetings, we would know that. We have worked with them because we are part, full disclosure, of the project that will be the second part of this project across the street. I have not had any problems at all with any disclosure issues from HTC, and I feel that they have operated above board and actually beyond. So I just wanted to add that as a property owner on the corner there, where any entrance would be if there were an alleyway or anything.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
If the commission desires, I can answer a couple of questions related to Ms. Baez's comments earlier. Related to the tree at the Shade Tree Commission last night.
You speak closer into the mic, please.
Yes, sorry. Related to the tree, the Malagro House tree that we were at front of the Shade Tree Commission last night, we were there to ask for removal because of the conflict with the required, per the ordinance, tree protection zone. Our original, our original plan for that area and that tree was to try and work within the tree manual, the city's tree manual, to salvage that tree, working with different excavation methods with the utilities that run through there, and try and save that tree. And that's what we had agreed with, with Malagro House. However, Malagro decided they thought it was best, in their best interest, just to remove the tree and not worry about it dying or not. The statement about the arborist was, you know, we can, we can work within the confines with the techniques for excavation on the utilities. However, and that involves viewing and trimming the root system as we, as they're excavated as necessary. However, with the, with the requirement of the, of the subsurface infiltration bed there, we can't trim the roots. We'd have to just cut them back. And that's where the arborist had an issue. So, where it landed last night was that the Shade Tree Commission denied removal, but told us we could, if we could work with the city's tree arborist on a reduced tree protection plan, that we could do that. And so, that's what we are doing right now. We, we feel confident we can get an arborist on board and, and reduce that tree protection zone and make a proposal to the, to the arborist and the Shade Tree Commission with that.
Repeat that again. Reduce tree?
The tree protection, the required tree protection zone, which again is a, I believe, already mentioned, or is going to be mentioned as a condition of the, of the approval tonight, if it's, if so done.
And what would that look like? I mean, cutting back the tree, trimming the tree? I don't know what that, what?
No, it would be, so the, the, the protection zone is based on the size of the tree, how far out you have to maintain protection of the root system. And based on the type of tree it is, Norway maple, and I'm, I'm going to apologize because I'm a, I'm a land surveyor and, and site designer, not a landscape architect, but I will repeat what our landscape architect said last night, is that these Norway, Norway maple has very shallow root system and is, doesn't have a taproot, and that they're very hardy and very sturdy, and that we feel like we can, we can have an arborist provide us with a tree protection plan that is smaller than what's required, modified, and present that to the, the city arborist for review.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Can I ask for clarification about fire truck access, or that part that was brought up?
Yes, we, we had, along with city staff, spoken with the Fire Chief, and the Fire Chief had no concerns about the, about being able to service this building as it's designed. He does not need to come up the side of the building, on either side. He does not need to be on the parking deck. They can, they can service this building as needed from College Avenue and Elm. Also, while I'm here, the, the trash is internal to the building and gets rolled out the side, right? Yep, thank you. Right in this area. And we'll be pushed out for the trash trucks when they come. However many times that is a week, that hasn't been determined. But they come in the same, they come in there already. They don't have to go on the deck.
Just want to add a little bit more information on the fire trucks, since it seems like that's a question that keeps coming up. We have worked with the city building department and the city fire bureau as we've gone through the development of this project, and talked about access and talked about how they want to get fire trucks around the building and so forth. The only reason that there was any discussion about an aerial access for this site is because there is a recently approved new fire code that has an appendancy that talks about aerial access trucks. And so, there's a roadway that's required for that, which does not make sense in many urban sites. And so, that's when that issue came up. The Fire Chief felt very comfortable that they would be fighting any fire at this building, either from College Ave or Elm Street. They typically set up on the streets. They run hoses into the site and so forth. The other thing that we did agree to do on this particular project is not only does it meet the minimal requirements of code for building construction type, it also has a sprinkler system and has fire alarm systems. We also made the change from a 3B construction type, which is unprotected wood construction, to 3A construction, which is a much higher protection factor for the structural elements of the building. And so, it is designed well above what's required by typical building and fire code requirements.
Good evening, planning commissioners and city planning staff. I'm Jeremy Young, Director of Community and Economic Development at Lancaster City Alliance. Our organization helped to develop and continues to manage the implementation of the community-owned Building on Strength Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city of Lancaster, which was adopted by city council in 2015. That plan, again, community-owned, the implementation is led by a coalition of 40 or more private sector and public sector implementation partners, of which HTC Mid-Atlantic is one of those. The Building on Strength Plan has some broad goals for the community in terms of bricks and sticks development, including the development of 2,500 new residential units of all types and all price points by 2030. And given the city's density and lack of available development opportunities, the plan seeking approval tonight, which would include 64 affordable units, would be one of the most important steps toward that goal, and specifically the goal of an increase in the number of affordable units of that 2,500, which is the goal. We also recognize the merits of the project, especially the fact that it would bring vacant and underutilized property to a higher and better use, and would certainly help to promote a healthier mix of incomes in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Long time no see. I'm Michaela Owen. I live on the 600 block of West Chestnut, and I have a bit of a curse in both working on this project, on the affordable housing side, and being a neighbor. So, as you guys know, as I've presented to you, you know, I'm an affordable housing advocate, and I believe really strongly in the development of affordable housing in the city. But I'm going to ask you to put that aside for one second and let you know that we, as neighbors who back up to this project, are pretty scared for the safety of our parcels and our homes. Right, you've been told that there's no access now, but that's not true. I have a grass lot behind my house. I could easily access it in case of an emergency. I, I appreciate that the Fire Chief has said that you can access the center of this building from Elmore College, but our houses aren't sprinkled. So, we can no longer access the rear of our house in an emergency. We had such an emergency this past year when a large tree on our property was dying. It was under threat of falling on our home. We had to access through the rears of our property to remove that tree in order to save our homes. We will no longer be able to do that. I truly believe, again, that this is not an issue that neighbors are against affordable housing, as much as that's the picture that's been painted of us. I'm a perfect example of that, as I work to increase affordable housing every day. I am just here to ask that you guys look at the structure of this building and think about the unresolved issues, not to shut down the project, but to resolve those, those issues, to make a safe place for not only the residents, the future residents of this building, but the existing residents. We've been told, again, that there is access to the center of the building for fires, but we haven't seen a plan. We haven't seen what an emergency would look like. We haven't even seen, other than today, them saying that this, this access area is a grassed area. I mean, to me, that means there's going to be trash. There's going to be potential illicit activity. If there's no lighting back there, there's no screening. I, I'm, I'm very concerned for the safety that this poses for the rear of all of the properties on Chestnut, and that's my main concern. Not that it's an affordable housing community. I wish all new, new, new communities in the city can all be affordable housing communities. That's not our concern. Our concern is strictly one of safety for now, and I ask that you really take that into consideration today. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Wow, that's really loud. I have a comment I'd like to make, because I've been stewing on this a little bit. Something that really frustrates me when I hear something of the nature, if we had all attended the meetings, we would know this, know that. Public outreach cannot always resolve the qualms of community, like community frustrations, but I, I find it, I'm going to use the word detestable, to reference someone's ability to attend meetings in capacity, in relation to their ability to understand something. It's personally something I take very seriously. It's arguably one of the reasons we have cameras in City Hall. So, I do recognize that you could outreach to the nines and potentially not resolve all frustrations, but I don't like comments like that. I, I would also like to add, this is totally separate from that, I think the tree issue that we're seeing here is valid and worth consideration, because trees are one of the things in our environment that outlive us. They do, especially older trees. I'm not a fan of non-native ones necessarily. I think we need more white oaks in our ecosystem to support butterfly populations and, and so on and so forth. But I do think the concerns that we've heard so far tonight are valid and worth further consideration. That being said, I'm not a voting member tonight, but I just make these statements because I, and I, I think there's a lot of validity to concerns that have been had thus far.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Joe Wise. I'm a resident at 229 Elm Street. So, I, I want to echo what Michaela said. Our neighborhood, I want, we want affordable housing. We're excited in a lot of ways about this project. And I know words like transparency immediately set us on the defensive, and, and I understand why that would. You know, a lot of this project came about when COVID was flaring, and it made dialogue different. It made engagement difficult. And I've learned a lot as a citizen in trying to be engaged throughout this whole process, and I appreciate the learning opportunity. I really, truly do. And I'm so glad that you're live streaming this today. Access is the whole name of what this project is about. This project is about access. We all deserve access to everything to make, you know, a, a happy life, whether it's housing, no matter what. But just, I think a lot of lessons have been learned in this scenario of how, how can information be accessible? You know, somebody who doesn't speak legalese, you know, when I see the word Adamsbury Associates in the newspaper, I have no idea that has to do with HTC Mid-Atlantic because it's a subsidiary and they're having a meeting. I would have never known that until now. So, thank you for the learning opportunity, but also, I'm a pretty engaged citizen. How does anybody know who that is? So, I just think it's an important thing. Let's use this as a city, as a learning opportunity, and I'll get off my soapbox about that. I am still a little concerned about parking and not having enough space for the cars. But, you know, I know that they're, they're given what's required. I am also, I have a question about the green space, and maybe it's just how you worded it tonight, that you said, um, there's going to be a planting strip on Elm Street. Has that changed from the last sketches we saw with the green space that you kindly added after our dialogue? Has that changed? Am I allowed to ask questions? Okay.
I'm sorry, Thomas. Do you mind pushing the mic for the live streamers?
Yes, that has, that has changed. Currently, the sidewalk is, is a full width on Elm Street from curb to the back of the sidewalk. We are going to have the required planting strip, and that's where those three trees are going to be located.
So, it, it does seem like it's smaller than the last sketch as, as the amount of green space that is being left, or is it just the sketch? Or the, the drawings? It's more than a sketch? It's smaller. Okay.
So, I, I believe, I believe the green space is the same. We did have to add the generator pad. That would be in this area right here. But this will be green space. And we added this five-foot strip between the curb and the sidewalk.
Yeah, so I just ask that, you know, that we reconsider going back to that, that older amount of space. That was something that we really appreciated as a change. And then one more thing is just a future question that I, I will speak for Elm Street folks especially, but I know it affects all neighbors, is that we're very nervous that Washington Place Equities will make that an egress, an in and out, when they take the parking garage property. And I don't know what sort of dialogue can happen with that. I think we so appreciate that you heard that feedback. Thank you. That we were not comfortable with the in and out of all those cars on Elm. But how can we prevent that same thing happening again with Washington Place Equities when there's really not a dialogue happening there? That's just a concern to put out there. Thank you.
So, the, the egress on Elm from the parking garage currently is, is not used. It is chained off and locked. It has been a, an ongoing comment that we have received from city staff to consider closing that, and our response has always been that it's not our property to be able to close, and we would have to check with Washington Place. And we, we tried to put, quite honestly, we tried to put that decision off onto Washington Place's design. Place's design process. The city has asked us to, continued to ask us to do that. We reached out to Washington Place just yesterday to see if they had any issues with that. They had none, so we have agreed to close that off. And, you know, as far as I know, Washington Place, I can't speak for them, but don't have any plans to reopen that. If they do want to reopen that, that'll have to be part of, they'll have to ask to have that reopened and go through the entire process to have that done with the city. So, you know, we've done what we can there, and we can't speak for what Washington Place is going to do in the future. But we've agreed to close it off based on getting permission from the landowner to do that as part of this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond just briefly to that as well. So 250 College Ave, the main redevelopment of the hospital is also under land development review right now, and this garage is also a focus of that plan as well, since this is a shared facility. And I can testify to the fact that Elm Street is not being shown as a usable entrance or exit from that project. It's also that entrance is not being included as part of their traffic study for traffic that is coming in and out of the parking garage, because it's not going to be a usable entrance. That depressed curb will have to be removed by that developer at that appropriate time. But in the meantime, a permanent barrier is going to be erected there, you know, probably an extension of the black powder coated gate that's there currently on either side of the drive aisle. If you look at it from, if you're standing in Elm Street, there's, in fact, it might be worth just, if you don't mind, Mendeli pulling up an image of, on Google Street View of that. I think it'll clarify what I'm talking about, and it's on the back of the property. So if you type in, I don't know, like 230 Elm, you should, yeah, there you go. Yes. Down a little further, and then turn. So you can see there's a gate there currently, but there's only a chain across the entrance. So that gate is going to be extended so that there's no way that a vehicle can enter through there. We were also concerned about pedestrians cutting through that part of the parking garage as well. So in the meantime, that's going to be closed off. Of course, you know, there's complexities between these two projects, and there has to be some fair delineation between what is one property's responsibility and the other property owner's responsibility. And so where the city is trying its best to toe a line where we are addressing the safety concerns created by this particular building and development, and recognizing that there's additional improvements to the garage that have to be made in the future as well for it to be not just safe coming in and out, but structurally sound going forward too.
John Haney, 642 West Chestnut Street. I have two questions about the conditions, kind of administrative questions. Will the six conditions you mentioned be explicitly stated in the meeting minutes from tonight? So they'll be clearly understood?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And then, other than our faith in you as the commission, what assures that those conditions are all met? Because if I'm understanding correctly, there is no further public review, public comment period to confirm that all those conditions are met. Is that correct? Like, this can be finally approved tonight, permission granted, and then it's all on faith that behind the scenes, behind the green curtain, those conditions are met?
So when, or if the commission approves the plan with these conditions, it'll take some time for the developer to meet all of those conditions, because some of these will, you know, require some edits to the plan. When those are all satisfied, and that is a staff decision, you know, we're looking at the conditions that were approved by this body, ensuring that the plan meets those conditions, and then the chairman of the planning commission comes to City Hall and he signs off on the plans to testify that that's true, as do several other city staff. Our city engineer does that as well, and our stormwater engineer. And then there are agreements that others sign, including myself and the mayor, to testify that this is all happening. Those get taken to the county recorders of deed, and it's recorded there in the land record. That, at that point, we can sign off on building permits if needed. The building permits are also extensively reviewed, though, because there are historical commission decisions that we need to ensure are being delivered on through that process. There's some land development pieces. There's an extensive fire code review of the entire building. That doesn't have anything to do with the exterior, but there's plenty more in the building code section that has to be addressed, and we have third-party reviewers and city staff that do that. When it's time to finally start building, what we have also, sorry, at the recorder stage, is we get money from the developer. And the city, that amount of money is related to the cost of the improvements that are being made to this parcel of land. We don't collect money for the building itself, but we collect money for all of the required site improvements that are shown. So that would be reconstruction of the driveway, installation of street trees, sidewalks, stormwater facilities, erosion and sedimentation control, et cetera. That's often given us, to us either, typically in a letter of credit or a performance bond of some kind. On a rare occasion, maybe a developer doesn't deliver on their promises, and the city pulls on that line of credit, and we ultimately do the work. So they've submitted an opinion of probable cost, and somewhere around, I forget the number, someone probably knows it, 1.7 million or 1.5 million, that will be given to the city to ensure that this project is followed through with. Now, the building may never happen. I mean, let's just entertain worst-case scenarios, but we would have that money to ensure that the site is made safe, even if the building's not erected.
Thank you.
Sure. That's often a part of the process we don't get into here with the commission, because it's on the back end oftentimes, but it's a really important part of the process to highlight that, you know, there is accountability by the developer through that process. And there are inspections through construction. In fact, we've recently taken the step of contracting with a local engineering firm so that we have capable engineers and site inspectors who can show up at these construction sites regularly and ensure that things are being done properly. With the amount of development we have going on in the city right now, it's been hard for city staff to keep up with that. So the planning bureaus is in particular contracting with a firm to do that for site engineering work.
Mr. Smith, I have a question for you.
Sure.
So there's going to be two questions, actually. The first is related to that zoning situation. So I know that it's not in our purview to decide based on that, but let's say, let's say that the plan is approved and then work occurs, but then the legal situation is resolved, and it's not favorable to the developer. What happens to a project if it's in the midst and something like that were to occur?
Well, it's a good question, and there are a lot of scenarios there to play out, and I'm not sure I can do all of that, because it gets quite complicated. Ms. Honado, do you want to weigh in on that? And while you're making your way to the mic, I'll just say that, simply put, this plan would really no longer be valid anymore, because there's no longer zoning approval to support it. But please.
The zoning appeal is pending, and we're waiting on the court making decisions on pending motions, and then it will be a determination as to what the next steps are, either by us or by the, excuse me, the appellant in this case. Realistically, until such time, if there's probably more of a definitive answer on that, this project isn't going to go forward, because this project isn't going forward out of HTC's pocket. They have investors, and investors are going to want to have some sense of the project being viable. And so...
Okay.
Okay. Realistically, that's really what it comes down to.
Thank you.
We're hoping that we get it resolved before then. We're trying to work on that, and, you know, but realistically, bottom line, real life.
It's a little too risky to...
Yeah, yeah. But we can. We can go ahead and do it, and there have been projects that have gone ahead, buildings have been built. You know, six years later, a court gets around to deciding, and building comes down.
Okay, that's, that, thank you.
It's one of those scenarios you don't even want to get into, but it has occurred.
Gotcha.
We don't want to get there, so, okay?
Thank you for the clarification on that.
All right. And is your second question something that, or is it more Douglas?
I think it starts with Douglas, and then he might throw it out to someone out there. So, you know, the alley situation has been brought up a few times tonight. Can we pull up, like, an image of the neighboring lots? And the question I, I'm going to ask you, but it's more like to the general world here. Is there a world in which the property owners have the space and there's a viable option to essentially purchase land from their lots to construct such an alley to protect their homes?
I'm not sure I totally follow you. Purchase land from HTC or Adamsbury, or provide their own land, the rears of their own lots for development, for an alley?
Yes, so the neighbors, like, in a world where, let's say, this plan doesn't change at all, it's completely static as it is, and the concern for alley being present still, the neighboring properties being compensated in a way to give part of their lots, because I don't, that's why I wanted to pull up an image of, like, how these properties all line up, because if there's room on the back lots, that's the image in my mind, is that this is the yards of homes. If there's the space, it would be viable to section off a part to be meant for alley construction.
I think we're very much in the theoretical here, but there's a possibility that a subdivision lot out on plan could possibly happen to do that. I think, more simply put, the city has looked at the possibility of an alley here, and we do not feel that that is very feasible for a number of reasons. There are grade issues back here that make it very difficult to install an alley. When you start grading out for a road, you know, you start grading into people's properties, and there are trees that are there as well, and there's additional disturbance, too. In addition, all of the stormwater would need to be managed. You know, there are access seisments that all of those property owners would have to agree to. There's, of course, the cost of it. I mean, I could go on. There's more. There's the width of the alley. We don't accept dedication unless it's 16 feet. That would be a substantial portion of the lot. There are a number of other issues to go into. I do want to highlight one particular action, though, that the planning commission does have to make on this. So the SALDO, or Subdivision of Land Development Code, and I want to read from it, because it's, I don't want to mince words here. There is a provision that says, "Alleys shall be provided in new subdivisions and land developments." And if you want to follow along, this is a section for the planning commissioner, section 265-33, and it's under the section titled "Design and Improvement Standards" in Article 7. I wish I had the page number for you, but I don't. But it's... I'll wait. Does anyone have any questions about where to find this, if you'd like to follow along?
The bottom of the page says 265:51. I don't know if that's technically a page number for it.
Oh, yes, that's right. 265:51 is the page number in your book. And then if you turn to the next page after that, I believe it's bullet number five. Yes. "Alleys shall be provided in new subdivisions or land developments, except that the commission may waive this requirement where other definitive and assured provisions are made for service areas, such as off-street loading and unloading areas and parking areas consistent with and adequate for the uses proposed. The city shall have no obligation to accept an alley as public." So in this instance, the city is not willing, or at least we've never seen a design that we would be willing to accept for a public alley. It's, at least the planning bureau's perspective, that service areas, off-street loading, unloading areas have been taken care of through the provision of the parking garage and the driveway access off of College Ave. There's also, there's rollout toters for trash pickup. There's a pull-off area that's also been provided in the driveway area. So from our perspective, it meets the provision here. This is not a typical modification, because they're actually, if you waive it, they meet the letter of the law. So we've asked them to actually remove this as a modification from the plan, because they will be consistent with the ordinance, given your concurrence with that. I hope that makes sense. So all of that is to say that the ordinance does often support alleyways. We don't usually dedicate them to public property, and they're usually for internal navigation within a site, like the hospital redevelopment, for instance. So we've looked at the issue. We don't believe that this is an area where it is warranted.
So if I'm understanding you right, the only reason an alleyway wouldn't be included is because we are waiving that requirement. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say so. Yeah, you may waive it, otherwise they should be provided. And, you know, there are examples of projects that, you know, have provided alleyways or, you know, internal navigation is really what, we don't often call them alleyways, because they don't, sometimes don't function that way. They function as access roads into parking areas and into the building. So the language is a little bit confusing, but yes, is the short answer.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Personally, I, if I were voting on this, I don't know that I would waive the alley just yet. I feel like there's a larger conversation to be had about the safety of the homes still. And yeah, I don't know that I would waive this if I were able to vote on that.
Just, if I can just say one thing about the safety of the homes or whatever. In actuality, if you can get into those backyards now, you're going to be able to get into those backyards when the building's built. Because the building is going up, except for a little bit of extra length. The building is going to be where the current structure is. The front part at 213 is the current foundation wall of the existing building. There it is. And as you go back, the building is going to be at where the current wall or, you know, end of the parking garage structure is. It will be a little bit longer going back out to Elm Street a little bit, but if you can get in off Elm Street now, and I guess that's the only way they can get in now, if they need to get into their backyards, it still would be something that could be accomplished in the future.
Ms., I would appreciate some context from the neighbors on this, just because I don't live there. I don't know.
And Mr. Dastur, maybe I can just put a finer point on what Bernadette is suggesting here. Mendeli, if you could point to the direct rear of the medical office building, there's a grass lot there between the parking structure, sorry, the rear of the building from College Ave. So there's a grass strip that wraps around the building right here. That area will be filled in with building. So I believe Ms. Allwyn lives nearby there. There's a grass lot there currently. There will no longer be a grass lot there. The frontage of the garage will be at 12 feet from the property line, and it'll extend to the rear of what is the medical office building. So the 12-foot distance is, I think, what you're suggesting would give them access.
As they have now. I'm stand corrected about the grass lot between the medical arts building and the garage. But otherwise, the structure of the building is going to be the same as is currently there. It's going to be taller, but it's not going to be any closer to the property line than it currently is.
I understand there's some dissident...
I know, they don't agree. No, that's fine.
And that's okay. Maybe we can invite, maybe is there one resident that can speak to what the differences might be here, just so we can... resident that can speak to what the differences might be here, just so we can, uh, include...
Hope you all appreciate that. So, right now, behind a few of the houses is a grass lot, so on-grade access to the rears of our property. Additionally, where the footprint of the, um, parking deck is, it's either on-grade or below grade, so the parking deck act, the, the on-grade parking deck actually is set back another, what, ten feet or maybe? Between five and ten feet, I don't, I haven't measured. So, actually, the, anything on-grade to our property is the twelve feet plus the additional ten feet. So, not only will this be closer to our house, but then it'll be six, fif, five stories up. So, again, I said earlier, you know, there's been a picture painted that this is in the exact footprint of what we have there now, and it, it just is not true. The outline of the building might follow the outline of, of concrete that's there now, but the condition is far from the same.
So, it, it, this gets complicated, because there are two levels, and what, um, which is making it difficult to explain, so the upper level of that parking garage that Miss Alwine was referring to is twelve feet from the property line. So, that setback is not changing. The building is going where the building is currently, the, the furthest face of that building. Below that, the ground level, there is some grass there, that's open, um, so that is going to be filled in, um, but the twelve-foot width from a bird's-eye view is not changing. I understand the structure is going vertical, it's filling in that space, um, but, and there's, and thank you, that's, that's a helpful view, too. And I guess all of this boils down to, currently, there's no access easement for them to legally go back there and access their properties, but there are rear gates back there. So, what is the arrangement, if any, between the residents and the new property owner? And is there, is, should there be any accommodation that's made? Clearly, we can't put a, a street back there, um, given this design, but, uh, is, are you proposing a change in conditions for the residents accessing the rears of their properties?
The residents have not raised that issue with us. I am somewhat constrained, and I can't talk to the residents directly, if there are pellents in the suit, because they're represented by council, and I, by my laws of, to govern my profession, I can't talk to them directly. No conversations have been had, that I'm aware of, that anybody has requested, that they have access to that area back there. If they were to request it, I would think that we would consider it and see if there were some accommodation that could be made.
I almost feel like we should table this, so that we can give opportunity to have that conversation, like, for those two groups to have that conversation, because it, it seems to be a large issue.
But it's really not an issue that is one that governs the decision that you make here this evening, that kind of thing.
Well, it seems like it would be, because we're waiving the alley.
Well, I think Douglas needs to explain that to you a little bit better. The reason you would be waiving the alley is because we have met the conditions in the ordinance to have the alley waived. We have the, the access for the trash and everything else, the parking and all of that, and so we meet the, we meet the conditions of the ordinance that allows for it to be waived.
Okay, so Douglas, that, so basically...
Mr. Dastro, do you mind if I add something here about the alleyway?
Go for it.
So, the alley is, the purpose of alley is to serve that lot, particularly for that lot, it's not gonna be used, we can't tell the developer, no, uh, have the alley for the public use, we can't do that. And also, for, for the alley, let's say, uh, where is the lot right now, yeah? If, if, if the developer decided the alley is gonna be here, I don't know if you, you follow me here? I can't tell them, no, put the alleyway here, you know? There is nothing in the ordinance said that the alley should be in a particular place. I don't have a mechanism in my hand to enforce the developer, or even the designer, to have the alleyway he, here, not here. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, I concur with that, and, and to add, you know, what Bernadette said about the conditions, um, I said, I believe that those are being met, and, uh, what Mendeli pointed out is essentially that the driveway is serving to provide for those, those uses, um, off-street loading, unloading areas, parking areas consistent with inadequate for, for the proposed use. And, uh, that alleyway, if it were to be installed, which, again, I don't think is feasible, would only service, really, the property owners on Chestnut Street, not, not this development, so Mendeli is correct about that.
And it would have to, it would have to be on their property, in order for us to meet the setbacks that we have to meet, the alley would have to be on their private property. And I'm not sure that, that's not gonna benefit us in any way, and I'm not sure that they would want to do that, and there's also some structures that would be in that alleyway area, closer down to Elm, there's a couple of structures that are in the back of the properties already.
I, I do, however, Mr. Dastro, think that there, there may be some opportunity to explore pedestrian access through the rears of the yard, uh, that seems like it would be beneficial to the residents for yard waste and other, you know, um, you know, other activities in the rears of their yards, but, uh, that, that would really be, um, you know, up to HDC to, uh, to propose. I mean, we're not, the, the Chestnut Street houses are not a part of the development plan, right? So, providing access easements to those, those property owners, um, again, I don't, I don't know that this plan is the mechanism to do that, since it's not within the development concept, uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be thinking about that, uh, tonight, as we continue to talk, but that, that's my initial sort of, uh, reaction to that.
Okay, thank, thank you both for the additional information here.
And, not wanting to govern how things go, but maybe if we got into the conditions, it might answer some concerns or issues that people have, if, yeah.
Sure, I can get into the conditions. Um, Mendeli, do you have the latest conditions handy, or should I, um, put these on the, on the screen through document camera? Unfortunately, our document camera and projector don't appear well on, uh, live stream, so I do want to read through these, um, just for clarity. So, the first one is a, a typical one, "Construction guarantee and the amount of the approved opinion of probable cost shall be submitted in the form that is acceptable to the city." I detailed that before about financial assurances. That opinion of, and that actually should say probable, uh, probable cost is the mechanism we use to do that, it's done by a sort of, a professional engineer. Number two, "The development plan shall comply with all city ordinances and standards." Again, that's a standard, uh, condition that we apply. Number three, "A substantial barrier such as a gate shall be installed near the Elm Street driveway apron to prevent pedestrian and vehicle access, which shall be accompanied by a construction detail and revised opinion of probable cost to be approved by the city engineer." Number four, "Tree protection shall be fully satisfied per trees ordinance, tree manual requirements for trees, with tree protection zones extending into areas of disturbance, construction, or as modified." So, um, that is, that pertains to the tree that was not, uh, approved for removal, um, at the Milagro House property, uh, and I'll mention one more thing about that, uh, at the end here. Number five, "All required and necessary agreements must be submitted to the city for review and approval, including but not limited to stormwater access easements, stormwater O and M agreements," that's operation and maintenance agreements, "utility easements, and the city's developers' agreement per Section two sixty-five of City Code." Number six, "The parking lease agreements, the development agreements between landowners and cross-easements of any kind that support this development shall be compliant with all city ordinances, standards, and the approved land development plan, and be submitted to the city for record." So, the, the plan does detail a number of easements, um, that if we need to pull up, we can, uh, but including, um, all of those. Number seven, "Wall packs," that's a kind of lighting, "shall be provided on the north side of the building to illuminate the outdoor parking, which shall be accompanied by a construction detail and revised opinion of probable cost to be approved by the city engineer." Number eight, "All site lighting shall be, uh, less than three thousand Kelvin color temperature, as, and noted on the plan." That's essentially a warmer light versus like a daylight light, so it's easier on eyes, it's better for wildlife, it's better for dark skies, et cetera. Number nine, "Bike parking shall be provided in accordance with city zoning ordinance, Section three hundred, and shall be accompanied by a construction detail and revised opinion of probable cost to be approved by the city engineer." Two additional, um, notes on this. So, the Shade Tree Commission denied one of the trees for removal, it's currently shown on the plan as being removed, um, that should be made consistent with the Shade Tree Commission's, um, current decision on that. So, that would be, uh, a, a tenth condition, uh, that I'm proposing. This is a small one, but I require, "Of all developers, uh, the survey pins should be added to the probable cost, um, as well." That's just a site improvement, so that's for surveying to mark the new property lines, uh, that are being established. One note on the biking, and this is actually a question, uh, just while I have the mic, it looks like the bike racks that are, um, shown on the plan are in the bottom level of the parking garage, closest to the new building, uh, the residential portion on the lower level. I'm wondering if you can, um, sorry, maybe before I go there, are there questions about the, about the conditions that I just walked through? Because that's a detailed question. Questions or concerns?
Mr. Smith, could you, just for clarification, the last two that you added? Yeah?
Sure, um, so, uh, "The plans shall be consistent with the shade," sorry, "the Shade Tree Commission decisions." So, there were actually two decisions made by the Shade Tree Commission, one was for approval of all of the plantings and removals, except for the Milagro House tree. The second decision was made last night, and that was a denial of that tree. So, the first decision is shown on the plans, all of that was approved by the Shade Tree Commission. The second decision is not currently shown accurately on the plan, uh, that tree is slated for removal on the plan, and their decision was to deny that removal, um, so the plan should be consistent with that, and that ties into the condition four, which is the tree protection, um, is, should, that, that should be accurately shown on the plan. And then the second comment, the survey pins, um, those are what surveyors stick in the ground to indicate the, the edge, or the corner of, uh, property line, and, uh, those were not included in the opinion of probable cost.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, any other public comment before we move on?
Just for clarification, um, there, there is one modification that's being requested, um, this evening, which is in your packet, um, on this particular property, and that is, uh, that the addresses for the units not be shown on the plan. Uh, what we've found in practice is, uh, and this is the first development to request this, um, what we found in practice is that we require by ordinance, uh, units to be numbered and addressed. The city then distributes those to the post office, emergency providers, et cetera, so that we all know how to find these units. And sometimes, between the plan approval and the final construction, um, unit numbering can change, and so we are supportive of this modification. The addresses still need to be assigned, we still need to send those out to emergency providers, um, but we don't feel like it's necessary that they be shown on the plan right now. So, that's the one modification, uh, the one waiver, um, per the ordinance, that the commission should also, um, entertain, or should take action on, is the, the request, I, I assume, through way of the plan submission, that an alleyway, um, not be provided, um, because of, uh, it's meeting the conditions.
There, thank you. So, um, I guess we're, we're ready for the vote, for the commission?
Are there any final comments, if I don't, if you don't mind, Chairman, just extending one last offer, um, if there are any closing comments that anyone wants to offer from the development team?
Okay, hearing none?
And, sorry, Mr. Chairman, a motion should, should be made first.
Right, exactly, yeah. So, we're ready for a motion, someone?
Can I make a motion to approve the, um, plan, uh, for two thirteen College Avenue as presented this evening, with the, um, understanding that the, uh, six recommendations, I'm sorry, eleven recommendations, uh, will be taken into consideration before final plan recording, as well as the two, um, approval, the approval of modification, um, to not, um, showcase the, the unit numbers within the building, and the approval of the waiver, uh, to not have to, um, the approval of the waiver to not, uh, produce the alley.
Just...
I, I think so, just for clarity, does that include the, the two additional conditions I had?
Exactly, yeah.
That's correct.
And then two more, right, okay.
No, no, it's okay, I, we read through them once, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that.
So, we have a motion on the floor, um, to approve this project, and, um, two thirteen College Avenue as presented, we have a motion and a second. Ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Oppose? Hearing none, ayes have it, motion is carried.
And just for clarity's sake, we have, uh, five, is that right? Five voting members this evening, three alternates, so there was no votes cast from the alternate members, um, the alternates, uh, being, um, Ms. Gown and Mr. Stoltz-Fuss and Mr. Dastro, okay?
Thank you. Number four, redevelopment authority, of the City of Lancaster. If we get a blight for the following, uh, properties, A, five, um, twenty-two Beaver Street, B, two eleven Coral Street, C, two forty-seven and two forty-nine North Queen Street, and D, two fifty-one and two fifty-three North Queen Street.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to suggest, uh, just for the, the sake of, um, time, we do have a presentation, and in fact, a presenter who's been, uh, waiting for our attention. Do you mind if we pivot, uh, if the commission's okay with that, pivot to the comprehensive plan update, and then we can circle back to the redevelopment authority, uh, agenda item?
Okay, yeah, that, that's fine.
So, uh, with that, um, maybe we can notify Ms. Baptiste that we are, um, ready, and she's been waiting very patiently for us. Kimberly, can you, can you hear us? I did promise to text her, and, oh...
Yep, I'm here, Douglas.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Kimberly, do you mind just saying hi and making sure the commission can hear you?
Hi, everyone.
Okay, try again.
Hi, everyone.
Can, can you hear her okay, or do you need more volume? You can hear, okay. All right, Kimberly, take it away.
Okay, let's see, I need the ability to share screen, Douglas.
Okay, I just, I just allowed that. Um, and Kimberly, just so you can, have you been watching on YouTube? Have you seen the commission? Uh, have you been following along at all?
Tonight, no.
Okay, that's probably for the better, uh, but, here's Kimberly, and here's the commission, since you won't be able to see them during the presentation.
All right, well, you guys have clearly been hard at work already this evening, so hopefully... All right, well, you guys have clearly been hard at work already this evening, so hopefully, hopefully, this is the easy part of the meeting for you. Can, assuming Douglas, everyone can see the screen?
Yes, we are good to go.
Okay, great. And again, thank you for the opportunity to join you virtually this evening and just provide a bit of an update on the comprehensive plan process. I think I've met some of you in the past, I don't know if all of you, but my name's Kimberly Baptiste from Bergman, and I'm working very closely with the city team as the consultant team project manager on this effort. So before I jump into content, we are trying to collect demographic data for everyone that we are talking to as part of the comprehensive planning process, really to ensure that we are reaching all the different stakeholder groups that really represent the diversity of the city. So I can't see if folks are able to log on and take the short demographic survey, but I know the city would like to gather this information from everyone in attendance. So I'm not sure if the QR code will work from where everyone's sitting and where the screen is, but at the bottom of the screen is also a link that you can type in directly. And then it just gives you, you know, three or four short demographic questions to answer. So I can give folks twenty seconds to do this real quick if that works.
Thank you, Kimberly, it seems to be working. Everyone's busy on their cell phones right now.
Okay, and I'll just keep going with some overview slides while everyone finishes that up. Topics that I'm going to cover tonight, just a quick overview and recap of the comprehensive plan, talk a little bit about how we've been engaging community members through this process, and then give you a little bit of a snapshot of kind of where we are today in the overall process, as well as where we'll be going in the coming months. So just a reminder, the project team includes a number of consultant team members with various expertise as it relates to contributing to the comprehensive plan. In addition to Bergman, which is a full-service design and planning firm, we do have David Rouse on our team, he's an independent contractor, he actually worked on the counties, Lancaster County's comprehensive plan, and has authored a number of books about comprehensive planning. So he is a great resource for the team and really focusing now on helping us as we advance the policy framework, which I will talk to you about shortly, and will continue to work closely with the team as we move into implementation strategies. Forward planning, and I believe you're going to be hearing from Todd Poole in a couple of weeks at the next planning commission meeting, is on the team really focusing on market and economic information, as well as really diving into the housing analysis, and then connect the dots, is working closely with us on community outreach and engagement. At the onset of the project, back in summer of 2021, when we were brought on to commence this project, we worked closely with Douglas and his team to really identify and understand what are the overarching objectives for the city as they embark on this comprehensive plan. And through this process, the goal is really to identify what topics are most important to residents and property owners within the city, really create that decision-making framework that will help you as planning commission members, city council, elected officials, make decisions about funding and policies and programs over that ten-year timeframe, and really help to prioritize funding and resources that are most directly impacting what we've heard from the community as important topics to them. From an overall timeline perspective, as I just mentioned, we did kick off really officially in the summer of 2021. Looking at the overall timeframe, we are anticipating adoption by the summer of 2023, if not sooner, but really want to, of course, take a very deliberative approach and make sure that we are really creating a holistic plan that allows people, stakeholders yourselves, residents, enough time to weigh in on the direction. So our focus right now, and I'll talk more about this in just a few minutes, is really on the the Future Land Use Plan and the policy framework. And then, once we get through that process by early 2023, we'll be consolidating all the information into the draft plan, which we will then share with you, as well as the community at large. So your role in the process is critically important. We are seeing all of you as really ambassadors of the comprehensive plan process, so really making sure that community members understand the comprehensive plan and its value to the city, kind of tying back to those overarching objectives, which I mentioned earlier. As I just mentioned, ultimately, we're going to be providing you the opportunity to review and provide feedback on the draft comprehensive plan. And I know you've already been actively contributing to the comprehensive plan development in the form of really helping us think about preliminary ideas as it relates to future land use planning. And then ultimately, you will be responsible for providing a recommendation to city council regarding the adoption of the plan. So how have we engaged community members really over the past year or so? And similar to the overall process, when we first talked about the importance of community engagement as it relates to the comprehensive plan, there were a few items that, you know, we talked about with Chris and Douglas and the planning team at the city, really ensuring and recognizing there are other ongoing city initiatives, and to ensure there's alignment and a common message and theme associated with all of these efforts. Really trying to celebrate the planning process and get people excited about it, so we did create a unique brand, Our Future Lancaster, for the project, which I'm sure you've seen on T-shirts and other branding materials that the city has been handing out. But we also wanted to make sure that there was a very transparent, equitable, and inclusive process that really welcomed all residents and stakeholders to the table. So as you'll see on the next slide, we really have focused on providing a variety of different ways to get people engaged in the process, to ensure that everyone has a forum in which they feel comfortable to provide feedback. And to help organize all of that, early on in the process, we did create an engagement plan that outlined the different strategies for outreach. So what are some of the techniques that we've utilized to date? We do have regular bi-weekly meetings with the city's project team, so different resources and staff members from different departments throughout City Hall, just to make sure we are on the right track with regards to project direction. We're meeting monthly with comprehensive plan committee. We've held a number of meetings with other leaders from other groups and organizations throughout the city. We have in five advisory committee meetings, or five advisory committees that we have met with multiple times throughout the process. There have also been a series of public workshops, different pop-up events such as city staff participating in the Mayor's Neighborhood Week events, student engagement and outreach, we do have a project website, which hopefully you have all seen and viewed previously. And then we've actually engaged comprehensive plan committee members to do their own outreach through meetings in the box approach, which I'd be happy to talk more about if anyone has any questions. So in this late spring, early summer of this year, with the first year of the planning process really being focused largely on soliciting input, ideas, and feedback from the community, we did create and craft an interim engagement report. And this report is intended to really synthesize all of that preliminary information, which ultimately is providing us the foundation for all of the subsequent tasks that we're completing as part of this process. And in that report, we do summarize all of the different engagement opportunities that have been completed to date, and this is intended to be really a living document. We'll be updating this again to reflect additional outreach as we get into different phases of the planning process. But well over two thousand individuals have been engaged to date. We've held ten advisory committee meetings, over thirty, and this might even be over forty, public events have been held since July. There was the city's deliberative forum that was held this summer. There have been online surveys, as I mentioned, individual interviews, just under a thousand visits to the project website, and over fifteen CPC or comprehensive plan committee meetings. So a lot of different outreach intended to try and solicit feedback in a number of different forums. If you haven't visited the website, the website address is ourfuturelancaster.com, and there is a variety of information, and this will continue to get updated as we move forward in the process, where we'll share different deliverables as soon as they are ready for public review. We're also leveraging the city's existing Engage Lancaster website as well, and using this to provide another opportunity for online feedback associated with the comprehensive plan process. So speaking of process, where are we today and where are we headed? I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the process outcomes, as well as some of the deliverables that our team is working on closely with the city. If I were to synthesize kind of those primary outputs into five categories, you know, early on, it's really an understanding of community values and priorities, the Lancaster Today Report, which is really a snapshot of existing conditions, the policy framework, so goals, objectives, policies, and actions, which lead into ultimately an implementation strategy, and then also the future land use planning piece, so the the physical elements of the comprehensive plan. So with regards to the community's values and priorities, this is not so much about a hard and fast deliverable, aside from the part that we captured a lot of this feedback in the interim engagement report. But really, this is important to note, just because it was such an integral part of the overall process. Again, the first year of this process has really been focused on listening to community members, understand what's working in the community today, what's not working today. So we have a really solid foundation to build upon as we get into these subsequent phases, where we really start focusing on policies, actions, future land use changes. So this slide is just a quick snapshot of some of the feedback synthesized that we've heard from the community about what's great about the city today. They really love the mix of small businesses, the diversity, how walkable and accessible Lancaster is today, all of the parks and green spaces. So these are great things that we want to leverage and build upon as we think about the future of the community. But we've also asked them and needed to get an understanding of, okay, what's not working today? What are some of the areas for improvement? So again, we can focus the development of the comprehensive plan on really addressing those. So, you know, what we've heard a lot about is access to affordable and quality housing options, and I know Todd, when he comes to see you in a couple of weeks, will talk quite a bit more about housing, overall safety, real and perceived safety within the community, and then access to different community services and resources was another kind of key theme that community members said was an area and an opportunity for improvement within the city. The Lancaster Today Report was another early deliverable, we are just making the final tweaks to this report now, and I'm going to talk just a little bit more about it in a minute, but this has really been the focus kind of over the winter into the spring, with some tweaking and modifications over the summer, but we hope to make this report more readily available certainly by the end of this year. And it does focus on really a very comprehensive set of different topics, helping us to understand, kind of get that snapshot of where Lancaster has been, where it is today, and what are some trends that we're seeing that might impact the city as we move into the future. So just as an example, and this is not a comprehensive presentation of the Lancaster Today Report, or you would all be here till about ten o'clock tonight, but, you know, certainly we looked at socioeconomic trends, so here, this graph is showing some of the age trends, and you can see that we've compared data to the county, as well as the state of Pennsylvania as a whole, with the city being that orangish color line, but you can see that the city does have a higher percentage of the population in really that grade school to early family stage. So that's important for us to recognize as we start thinking about programming and land uses, and what might be the needs for those age groups, while also recognizing that these trends will change over time, and you still need to be taking into account the other age, age groups as well. And certainly, you know, trends, forecasting trends do show the population of Lancaster aging over time. We also looked at race characteristics, again, comparing the city to the county, as well as the state of Pennsylvania, and you can see here, I won't go through in detail, but the the graph here is just showing that the city is more racially diverse, especially compared to the county and the state as a whole. We also did a bit of analysis as part of the Lancaster Today Report, again, to give us some baseline information that can help feed ultimately policies and actions. So this graphic is just showing we did a bit of analysis to understand healthy food access in the city, and maybe where there are some constraints. We would like every residence to be within a half mile of a supermarket or store that has healthy food options. And you can see here on this map, the areas shown in orange are low-income areas where supermarkets are located more than a half mile away. So this is an opportunity, again, to explore improving access to healthy food in these neighborhoods in particular. We also did, there are a series of maps associated with the Lancaster Today Report that you're not seeing here on this presentation, but, you know, we mapped existing land use trends, so we could understand, you know, the differences in different areas of the city. We also looked at existing zoning, recognizing that ultimately, the future land use plan will make recommendations for potential zoning changes within the city as well. Another analysis that we did is looking at access to parks and recreation facilities, similar to healthy food access, you know, ideally, all residential units within the city are within a ten-minute walk to a park or recreation asset. So this map is showing that quarter-mile buffer area to existing parks and recreation resources. So the areas in gray are those areas that are currently, do not have access within that quarter-mile radius to an existing public park facility. The next element, moving on from the Lancaster Today Report, is really developing, and this is really the meat of the comprehensive plan, but it's really developing the policy framework and then flushing out all of the pieces of the policy framework. So this is certainly something that is still in process, something we're still talking to community members about and working very closely with the city on. But we have identified an overall framework where you have guiding principles at the top that are kind of overarching themes that are important to the city and should be kind of interconnected and thought about in all areas, goal areas, as well as policies and actions. We've identified five goal areas, and again, we still might be tweaked a little bit as we move forward and have more conversations about them, but right now, they are generally focused on neighborhood living, economic growth and opportunity, connectivity and accessibility, natural systems, and community resources. Under each of these goals will be a series of objectives, and under each of those objectives will be a series of policies and actions that we'll start having more community conversations about, really beginning next week as we hold our policy summit, that hopefully many of you are able to attend. And then lastly, with regards to the Future Land Use Plan, so as all of you know and have been engaged and working closely with the city, we're currently gathering feedback to inform the Future Land Use Plan direction. This will really be moving, we'll be moving more intensely into this phase of the comprehensive plan, really in the coming weeks. So look forward to kind of looping back with you to give you an update on our progress and preliminary considerations as we move forward in developing that. So with regards to really immediate next steps, so we do have our policy summit scheduled for next Wednesday. We have five series of meetings focused around different topic areas within the policy framework, such as housing, economic development, transportation, infrastructure, parks and recreation, but those will be held over the course of the day from nine AM, ending at seven thirty PM next Wednesday. Hopefully, all of you have gotten. Hopefully, all of you have gotten the emails from Emma about signing up for some of those sessions. We certainly hope to see you there to take advantage of some of your feedback and ideas about really advancing some of these important concepts within the city. And then, as I mentioned, over the course of October and November, we'll really be focusing on taking the input that we get next week and really starting to advance policy and action identification. And then also diving really headfirst into future land use plan preparation. So those are the immediate next steps for our team. And that is the end of the presentation. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
You mentioned the meeting box. Can you hear me?
So Kimberly, Kimberly, can you hear the other commissioner who's speaking?
I can hear someone talking, but I actually can't make out what they're saying.
Just some clarification.
So maybe you could just repeat it for me, Douglas, because I can't hear you.
The meeting box. She said that she would clear that.
Sure. So Kimberly, the question is about the meeting in a box. And I guess what that is, is that what you're wondering, Mr. Plight? Okay. Yeah, what is the meeting in a box, Kimberly?
So the meeting in a box, you know, was, we did it during the early phase of the comprehensive plan. And what that essentially allowed was for community members, primarily members of the comprehensive plan committee, to actually go out and facilitate their own meetings with their own neighbors or other groups, really to provide a comfortable environment for people to provide feedback. So we worked with the comprehensive plan committee members. We held a couple of different training sessions on how to facilitate a meeting. We gave them the materials in order to go out and conduct the meetings. And then they went out, held their own meetings, took all the feedback themselves and provided that feedback back to our team so we could incorporate that into the overall feedback for the project.
Okay, yeah, I forgot that. That's what it was called.
Yeah, so that rings a bell for Mr. Plight, Kimberly. Thank you. And we haven't done them recently. They were primarily a part of that value stage. You know, I think we continue to be open to ways citizens can help, you know, lead these conversations additionally. So, any other questions?
I have a question.
Kimberly, do you know what constitutes a grocery store? We can also dive into that with Todd, or I can get that information too if you don't have it handy.
So we did use actually a dataset from the city regarding grocery store location. And I believe some of that was tweaked to also account for some locations in the city that maybe aren't, you know, full-size supermarkets but do offer healthy food options. But again, the details of that dataset we can certainly provide after. But we did use data provided by the city to do that analysis.
I have this question. Do you have 2,000 people?
Yeah, just for the streaming public.
Oh, okay, yes. The 2,000 people that you engaged in the comprehensive planning process, I'm curious if you had a goal at the beginning of how many people you wanted to engage. And then follow-up question is, since you're collecting demographic information, just curious how well that matches up with the city of Lancaster.
Yeah. Kimberly, I think I can field this question. It's about the number of people we've engaged and the demographics of that. So our goal internally really has been to reach 10% of the city or about 6,000 residents. And to be more particular, it's really 6,000 interactions because it's very hard to track whether we engage the same person two times over a year and a half or two-year process. So 6,000 unique interactions. I found written in a previous goal from many years, from a couple of years ago, that I had 4,000. So 6,000, I really think should be our target, 10% of the city. So we're actually, I think we're well above 2,000 at the moment, but I can provide you a more updated number on that. Most of those are actually in-person. And we've been realizing recently that we can do a much better job with our online engagement. And so we've renewed our efforts there to try to engage more people there as well because I feel like we can get more bang for our buck. And I think that with the announcement of a comprehensive plan and its draft, keep in mind, there will probably be a really big push to engage at that point as well. So we're doing decently, I think, at this point. The numbers always we want to be higher. Regarding the demographics, this is a tough, this has been a tough one for us. So as I mentioned, most of these have been in-person, the engagements. And we get people at block parties, at downtown events, at festivals, things like that. And we get people for at most four or five minutes. And typically, we get them to complete the survey or the information. And then they want to, they want to be done with us and they want, they want to walk away. And it's been tough for us to really get everybody to fill out the demographic survey at that time. The other, so I guess what we've done is, to err on the side of caution, we have really prioritized the most diverse neighborhoods in the city for our outreach activities. We regularly, you know, are partnering with SACA or Brightside Baptist or other partners or just attending neighborhood block parties in the southeast and southwest. And so if you look at our events and the partners, the stakeholders we've engaged, you'll see they're primarily south of King Street. The diversity of stakeholders is really evident because of the stakeholder lists that we've been capturing. And we've been having people fill out surveys there as well. So all of that is to say, the demographics that we've gotten have been pretty, pretty wonky. So for instance, we had an engagement event with McCaskey and we probably had, I don't know, Kimberly, you were there, we had like 125 students or 150 students. They were all tech savvy and they were excited to fill out that demographic survey. They whipped out their phones, they filled in the QR code. So when you look at our demographics for engagement, it's something like 40% of, or 50% of our engagement was with people like under the age of 18 or something like that. So that's great that we can show that, but it's probably not the full picture of who we've actually been engaging. So we're still trying to piece together how to best represent all of this in our second engagement report. But needless to say, we've, we've been pushing hard on this. We've conducted a few meetings in Spanish only. We're actually working with some refugee outreach groups as well to see if we can have other meetings in other languages as well. Swahili is one that's high on the city's list. We get a lot of requests for translation in Swahili. So, and we still have a Spanish-speaking climate event coming up too later this month or next month, I forget. So I really appreciate that question and I'm happy to dive into that more deeply. Take a look at the engagement report too and see what we have there. It's interesting who we've engaged. And the second engagement report will come at the conclusion of all of this and I think will be a much fuller picture. And one last thing, sorry, you can, I can talk all night about this stuff. The deliberative forum that we held was, I think, our most interesting example of a way to like reach a very diverse community. We sent out 700 letters to residents. We offered them like $250 to show up for a day. And we required them to fill out a demographic survey as part of that enrollment. And then we picked blindly based on census tract and demographics, tried to get a representative sample of city residents to that. And I think we did a pretty good job with that too. So in that case, you know, you'll see we have like, there was still less than I wanted, but like 30% or 25% Hispanic Latino or something of that sort. More non-English speakers were there. So, yeah. Sorry to take up so much time with that.
When you're trying to engage with a diverse audience, are you...
Sorry, Nicole. Masufa, do you mind using the mic?
Yeah. When you're trying to engage with a diverse audience and we're trying to reach other areas of our city that aren't maybe as accessible or aren't as free to come into, you know, the central core, are you targeting like business folks or are you targeting just, you know, homeowners, anybody within the city or, you know? I want to make sure that when we collect this information, that the voices aren't just coming, I don't want the majority of these voices coming from our central business district. I think it's really essential to the success of this city that we do, you know, bend over backwards in order to try to hear from those folks who are, you know, on the outskirts of the city. I think, I mean, I do truly think if we solely focus on business and, you know, and the thoughts and, I feel like this plan is going to set itself up for failure because it's not going to be driven by what actually drives the city and that is the people that thrive here. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when we do, you know, consider diversity and consider getting additional input in, that, you know, I know it's harder to work within some neighborhoods because technology can be challenging, you know, but I do think it's essential for us to ensure that we are trying the best that we can to cultivate those relationships and listen to those voices.
Yeah. Thank you.
What kind of results did we get from the meeting in the box? Because I know in the Northeast, I think, Tony, you were in my house for that one, right? And we had quite a few good showings there, but was it across the city, similar results, like quite a few meetings?
I don't recall offhand where, Kimberly, they're asking about the meeting in the box and where all of those were held. And I don't recall where all of them were held. I know we had one, at least one in the northwest. We had one in the downtown. We had one in the northeast with you. We had one in the southwest. Miriam held that one. Maxine Cook, who's not present tonight, actually attempted to hold, I believe, two or three and she had zero turnout for that one. So that was, that was a real disappointment for her because she put in a lot of effort into doing outreach. It just highlights the challenges, right, of getting people places. So, and I don't recall the other ones offhand. I know that there were about seven or eight, I think, of those.
Okay. So I know you'd mentioned groups like SACA, for example, as partners in outreach. What kind of relationship do we have or like can we build as far as getting like just straight-up retail businesses to essentially advertise to their everyday consumers that were doing this? Because I don't know why, but for some reason, the memory popped in my head. I think like we celebrate Lancaster, we had literal cans of beer branded Lancaster City stuff. Like, I'm not necessarily advocating everybody gets wasted and takes an important survey, but, you know, it might be an interesting incentive to work in more of a shopping fashion.
Yeah, so Kimberly, the question's about how we can better engage the retail community in the city. And I think we're open to ideas on how best to do that, Tony, and I welcome that from anybody. To date, we have mostly been working through, for our business engagement, the Chamber of Commerce and Lancaster City Alliance as the two organizations. There's a, I'm forgetting the name right now, but there's like a, the chamber has been exploring a, forming a separate organization that can help create better capacity in local businesses. And I'm blanking on the initiative. We did some engagement with that group, which had local retailers. We've been, we've presented to the downtown merchants and through Lancaster City's economic development leadership team too, which has local businesses on it. So those are the primary ways we've done it, Kimberly. Am I missing anything else that you want to add?
No, I think you covered it. We do have, you know, at least, and our participation is varied, but on the comprehensive plan committee, we do have a couple of small business owner representatives as well.
Yeah, that's, that's true. The comprehensive plan committee, since this is new for some folks, that's a group of residents that the city and LCA and Tenfold put together to create a citizen-led body, not business owners, not movers and shakers in the community, but really trying to find, you know, your, your sort of working resident in the city who's not typically at these sorts of meetings. And we initially recruited 19 members into that. The numbers have, have been hard to keep up through the entire process because here we are like, you know, two years later after forming that group. But the participation is ongoing and that's, that's actually quite a diverse group. The only overlap here is with Maxine Cook. She was initially recruited for the CPC, is what we call it, and now serves on the planning commission.
You mentioned the deliberative meeting, which I think sounds really cool, and paying people for that. Like, have we considered paying people to take a survey?
We haven't gotten as far as paying people for all of the survey-taking. We've tried to compensate in certain situations. We unfortunately don't have unlimited funds here and we're a little bit restricted in what pots of money we can pay residents out from as well. So the CPC members were offered a design thinking training course through FNM. And FNM was able to compensate all the members, I think it was actually like $500 for their participation in that, in that training. So while we couldn't outright pay these members for their ongoing participation, we tried to connect them with certain funding opportunities. So that was a one-day training. Then we also pay for meals for most of our events. And in fact, the CPC members didn't meet each other for about 18 months because of COVID. So it was all virtual. And we sent delivery food to homes, sometimes family-sized orders, recognizing that some of these folks were mothers or fathers that had kids and had a hard time participating for an hour and a half meeting unless their family was fed. So we've, we've tried to lower barriers in other ways. In two instances, we've provided technology support and there was a gift given where a laptop was even provided to a resident. We've provided internet to residents through, you know, mobile Wi-Fi. We have allowed people to use our facilities here to access Wi-Fi for those meetings. And then the deliberative forum was also funded by FNM through, through funding that they had. So those are just a few examples of ways we've been trying to lower barriers, but it's an ongoing thing. Do you all feel like if a resident asked you, you know, what's the comprehensive plan about? Do we all feel like we can have, have that conversation and kind of describe what the plan is trying to accomplish and what our ongoing efforts are? That, to me, is like, I think, a really critical thing for you all to feel comfortable doing. So I want to make sure we're providing you any information you need to, to have those conversations.
Where is, when is the next time that residents would be able to engage and where, where should we point though? Is it just on the Engage Lancaster or are there other upcoming events we should be aware of?
Yeah, great question. Kimberly, you may have more to add to this, but I'll mention the, the big opportunity for you all, not necessarily for every resident, because it's invitation-only, is our policy summit day coming up next week on September 28th. That is a full-day event, but there's overlapping, there's different sessions throughout the day. You can just attend one if you want. So if you haven't enrolled in that, please do. The public right now at this moment can use the Engage Lancaster platform to answer two different surveys we have going on. One is about building typology basically and the kind of development they want to see in their communities. And the other one is about climate action opportunities in the community. So please definitely direct them there. If they want just general information or want to learn more or see some of the documents we've published, the ourfuturelancaster.com website is the best place to go. We do have a climate meeting coming up. As I mentioned, we're partnering with CASA on that, who's a local advocacy organization for new Americans and immigrants, mostly who speak Spanish. So they're actually working to do neighborhood outreach and promotion and to get us a group of Spanish-speaking residents to that meeting. So that's one way Spanish speakers can, can engage. Kimberly, do you know the date for that offhand? I'm blanking on that.
I know the date offhand, sorry, Douglas.
No, that's okay. I'm going to see if I can find that for you real quick. And if I can't, I will definitely email that to you all. Yeah, I might have to get back to you with that date. I apologize, I don't have that handy. Kimberly, are there other outreach opportunities right now that we have on the calendar that you wanted to highlight? Or did you want to talk just kind of about what the next, you know, phase might be where people can get engaged?
Yeah, I mean, other than the project website, which does have, you know, a comment form as well for just any general feedback that anyone wants to share, as well as just general overarching information. You know, I know we are starting to have conversations about hosting a public forum that will focus on, you know, policies and actions and getting input and feedback. I think we're still trying to figure out what the right timing for that is, but that will be, you know, coming up in the next few months very likely. And then again, reaching out to community members to share an initial Future Land Juice Plan. That might be, you know, more in early 2023. But those are two, certainly two pieces of information that we want to make sure we're sharing with the public in order to get their, their feedback before we finalize any content.
Yeah, thank you. And I will add, sorry, I'm looking at my list of events here, which we actually are, it's a task of ours to fill this out further, to look out longer. But on October 8th, we'll be at the Brightside Festival. I think I have the date right there, Mr. Polite, but please feel free to correct me. Okay, that's correct. And yeah, I will get back with the climate action date. We've been attending back-to-school nights recently, so that's been a busy evening time event. We've done the King School. We did, there was a migrant and refugee family back-to-school night. We also did, we have Washington Elementary that we attended and I think that there's one more. Oh, actually, Washington Elementary is tomorrow night. So, so they could do tomorrow night too, if they're going back to school there. So we've really tried to do sort of organic and in-person engagement at events that are already happening. We've found it's been very hard to set up a conference of plan event and then get a lot of people there. So we've taken a more, you know, organic approach, but one, once we get some key deliverables set up, we will have to have a really big advertised forum where I hope we can get like 250 people in a room for a night to hear about the plan. It's going to take a lot of effort, but that is, I think, like the best time to make like a massive, you know, attendance event happen. Yeah, and if you guys have ideas, like you can just shoot them to me in an email. Like, we're, we're always open to ways that we can do this more creatively and especially ways we can, you know, leverage relationships we have, like if there are mailing lists or certain Facebook groups or a business network. You know, we've got materials, like physical materials we can give people. We've got links and, and stock emails and posts we can give people. We're actually, we're, we have sort of a new social media outreach effort going on right now, so we might be reaching out to some organizations to, you know, use your resources too to do that.
I will say, now certainly Bethel AME Church is, is on the agenda. And the reason why I bring them up, because they are the oldest black church in the city. Yeah, I know you, we've been working with Brightside, but that church has been established since 1817. And they've been on the forefront of, you know, civil rights issues and other community issues. So I would encourage the, the comprehensive team to, to reach out to, to that congregation.
Thank you. Yeah, we can absolutely do that, Mr. Polite. Thank you.
Have you considered getting like an influencer or something to take over to kind of spread and promote the, the love, so to speak?
That is a great question. We, we've not had any contacts with influencers yet. It would be really fun if we could find one that's like focused on urban planning issues or something that would really help highlight this. Yeah, if you have suggestions, let me know. I can talk to DJ Ramsey, who's our sort of internal marketing mastermind and design guy. He's recently gotten some of the influencers who you might have seen in the media that have gotten some highlights. He made some connections with folks like those and kind of pulled them in. You know, most of them charge tens of thousands of dollars to come to your community and do this, which is just kind of crazy. So I don't know whether we'll be able to afford to pay an influencer, but maybe, maybe we can convince them that we're worth their while and social capital.
I'm trying to think, you know, even if you could get somebody like, like a, I don't know, Taylor Kinney's involved in Zootropolis, you know, can he, you know, and he has, that gives him a tie here to our community, you know? So is there some way that we could leverage that relationship, you know? That was just, I don't know, I'll keep thinking and see what I can.
Yeah.
With my brain, I'll turn a little bit, so.
And if you can connect me with Taylor Kinney, I would welcome that connection.
Let me see if I can make that happen for you.
Kimberly, I don't know if you knew, Taylor Kinney lives in Lancaster and runs a business downtown, but he's, he's sort of a big local community guy and superstar.
Yeah, I mean, I enjoy his TV show, so that's good to know.
And they don't need to stop tonight. You know, you can, again, shoot me some, some ideas or additional questions. Yeah, take a look through the engagement reports. And so a lot of your questions were focused on that. I'd be curious what you gleaned from, from that report. And Kimberly, thank you so much for your time this evening. I know you guys have been working really hard on this project and we're really appreciative for all your team's efforts.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. And hopefully next time I'll see you all in person, but appreciate your time tonight and have a good one.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks. Good night.
I believe we can return to our earlier agenda items, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly will. Going back to redevelopment authority of the city of Lancaster, it's there to get a blight for the following properties. A, 522 Beaver Street. B, 211 Coral Street. C, 247 and 249 North Queen Street. D, 251 and 253 North Queen Street.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have the full folders here if we need to dive into them. And just for the new members on the board, I thought I'd explain briefly what this process is. So the city of Lancaster, we condemn properties occasionally, unfortunately, and we give those landowners many opportunities, notices, to let them know what's wrong with their property and what needs to be done. In some cases, the landowner is not responsive to those or is unable to, or sometimes is even deceased. I mean, there's all kinds of conditions on which this might happen. And we have a property reinvestment board that these properties can ultimately be recommended to. And they review the details of the building inspections and property inspections and make a recommendation for blight certification. After that happens and the property owner's notified of that legally, they have an appeals period in which they can do something. When that appeals period passes, the Planning Commission gets that paperwork and it's our job as a board to certify the, the blight. It's been a fairly perfunctory process and it is, we don't have the ability to like negotiate with the landowner, for instance, for terms or conditions. The property reinvestment board before us, they can establish a contract or some kind of agreement for fixing the property and timelines. After we certify blighted, it goes to the redevelopment authority. This is a very elaborate process. And then the redevelopment authority can also enter into an agreement with the landowner for rehabilitation. They take an Act One and Act Two. Act One is sort of the, the action to proceed with the eminent domain process. And Act Two would be authorizing the redevelopment authority to actually take the property by, by eminent domain. So we have some properties before us that are going through this process. Beaver Street, I want to note that there has been some movement on this property, but we're, you know, it's being recommended for certification of blight. The property owner is pursuing demolition of the building because it's in really bad condition. So they're going through that, that process right now, but it hasn't been inhabited for, for a while. It was condemned close to a year ago under a previous owner, so it's been switching hands as well, making it, you know, extra difficult to get this rectified. Currently, no building permits have been pulled and no contact with the owner until Mr. Jones attended a recent meeting. So he can still fix this process if he engages with the redevelopment authority. And I know he's looking at historical commission approval for demolition. So 211 Coral Street. So the gentleman who owned this property is, he's deceased and there's been no other contact for the property that's been established. So it was condemned, again, close to a year ago, end of October 2021. And all the eligible list letters have been issued and there have been no return signatures on any of the letters. So that one's pretty straightforward, unfortunately. These, these next two are a little bit more, there's a little bit more history and significance here. So 247, 249 and 251, 253 are two adjacent properties on the, in downtown North Queen Street, Puff and Stuff and the Kebab Station. Most people know these buildings. These are in very bad structural condition. And we have been, there's some information here, but it doesn't begin to detail the communications that have been going on with the owner, Eli Barnathan. These were condemned in June of 2021. We feel, the city feels that this is a very serious state of blight structurally. So the, the properties were condemned and there have been no pull, no permits pulled, very little contact with the owner. I mean, Mr. Barnathan has been speaking with us and seems to want to do this, but no progress seems to be made on rectifying the buildings. He's had trouble paying his architects. It's just been a prolonged process. So the city never wants to do this to any property owner, but these properties really need fixing or else they will be dangerous for the community and the surrounding properties. So we would like to recommend that these are also certified blighted and moved expeditiously to the redevelopment authority where we can further negotiate with the property owner and potentially take the properties. So these, these would be definitely the most significant commercial properties the city's taken in, in a while, if we have to. Questions?
The only question I have is, are the buildings on Queen Street still salvageable? Or is it like a situation where they might have to be torn down?
I think we need more information to make that determination. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not safe to enter and I don't know that our staff will be going in them. A paid structural engineer probably should to determine the condition. The, the two buildings, while they're listed separately and they're on different properties, they, they share the same foundation and the issues are in the foundation. There's erosion of, you know, beams and posts in the basement that apparently, you know, scared, scared the city enough that they immediately issued condemnation. So the action could be that these are all together moved, are certified as blighted and moved to the redevelopment authority.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we do take all four properties, 522 Beaver Street, 211 Coral Street, 247 to 249 North Queen, 251 to 253 North Queen Street, and issue a certification of blight for those properties.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor to blight these, these properties that were mentioned for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Go to the left. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none? Motion carried. Eyes have it.
One other note on these, after these go to the redevelopment authority, they do come back for a recommendation of use. So you'll be seeing all of these again and we'll need to determine whether they're residential, commercial, et cetera.
And I guess we're down to other business.
Other business, there are t-shirts on the tables, on the table for you. I have sizes, small, medium, large, extra-large, and I think double X. Please take one before you leave. If, if you have a special somebody you want to provide a second to, you can take a second one with you. But as planning commissioners, you should all be adorning yourselves with these beautiful teal Planning Our Future Lancaster t-shirts.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Yes, and then take a picture and hashtag OurFutureLancaster. Get bonus points.
You didn't know that I was going to be the influencer, did you?
Okay, so, okay. Public participation, seeing none? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I so move.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion to adjourn the meeting and a second. All in favor? Eyes have it. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
The only thing, should I just leave the date blank? Right. Should I put it down or not?
That was, uh...
Yeah, because Douglas has...
And, uh, let's see. I just thought I'd circle a name on there.
I didn't know if I should.
Charles Bausman.
Okay.
He lives in Moscow. I don't know if you just saw any names on him, but he was the organizing force behind a unfortunate group of white feminists who convened in Lancaster Township, just outside the city, and started a new political party. And he lives on West Chestnut. And he was there on January 6th and so after that happened, he immediately called a one person.